And I'm calling to order the January 17th, 2023 Borough Council Work Session. That was item number one, which is our call to order. Item number two will be our Pledge of Allegiance. And can I have that, please, led by Mr. Allen? Okay, thank you. Going on to item number three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak tonight, come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And take about three minutes at the most. Mr. O'Brien.
John O'Brien, Executive Director, Westchester Business Improvement District. I would have made this tomorrow, but I can't make tomorrow's meeting. I just wanted to announce Westchester Restaurant Week is back. It is going to be Sunday, February 26th to Sunday, March 5th. We have 21 participating restaurants. They'll be offering special prefix menus, multi-course menus, at either $30, $40, or $50 a person, depending on the location. This is obviously a very slower time for both retail and restaurants. So council or anybody in the town, we're just trying to publicize this as much as possible. We had a great restaurant week last year, and we're just trying to build on the success from last year. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, John. Anybody else? Comments? Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, which is approving the appointment of Andrew Braun to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors. Any other, this is, John, you appoint somebody, right? To this, okay. Anything you want to say about it? Sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to.
So because the bid is a municipal authority, we make recommendations to the board, or to the, I'm sorry, Borough Council, and then council makes the official appointment. Mr. Braun is a resident of Westchester. He works at Northwestern Financial, located right at the corner of Chestnut and High Street. He serves on the YMCA board, and he's really looking to, you know, get more involved with our local business community. And his strong financial background is going to be an asset for the bid. So we highly encourage a positive for him.
Great. Any comments or questions from council or the mayor? No? Okay, thank you, John. Do we have to appoint that tonight and make a motion, or should we make that on, could that go on consent?
You could pull council to see if you want to put it on tomorrow's consent agenda.
Is that consent? Okay, good with that for consent? Okay, yep, so that'll go on consent, thank you. Moving on, under our Public Works Committee, number five, we have approved memorandum of understanding with the Westchester Library to install Storywalk on Borough property for three years. Labor to be provided by the Westchester Borough Public Works Department. I see there was no committee recommendation. I don't know if there's any more information you want to add about that.
Hello, Keith Karowski, Director of the Parks and Rec Department. As presented before the Public Works Committee last week, the idea hit at an awkward time for the library. They only found out about the grant right around the holidays, between times off. And unfortunately, my COVID illness last week, things kind of got moved around. But as per the committee's recommendation, they asked for a plan to be put together, a more thorough thought-out plan, which I believe the library has done. We have created, with Victoria Dow doing most of the heavy lifting, a memorandum of understanding between the Borough and the library of what is expected of both parties. I think it's an act in good faith that both parties would collaborate and would not make any decisions without each other's consent. Obviously, it's on Borough property, so the Borough has to be involved in memorandum of understanding for the granting body to give the monies to the library. And the library, the Parks and Rec Department, the Borough in general, has worked together on numerous partnerships over the years. Like I said, it's an act in good faith. The Parks and Rec Department's in support, the Friends of Hoops Park's in support, and here we are to present this to you. Any specific questions to the actual plan or the memorandum would probably be better directed to Victoria. As like I said, she did most of the heavy lifting on that last week when I couldn't.
Um, yeah, would you mind coming up and just giving us a little bit of an idea of what this is about? I don't think I'd get into too much detail.
I'm Victoria Dow, I am the Executive Director of the Westchester Public Library. So, yes, the turnaround on this was very unfortunate. We didn't get the email about this until the 20th of December. So it looks like the Office of Commonwealth Libraries had money left over that they want to distribute. And they came up with this plan, and the grant application is actually due this Friday, the 20th, at 5:00 PM. So, as you can imagine, it's been a bit of a scramble, and I really appreciate Keith's efforts for this and Mr. Metrics as well, and the Public Works Committee. So Storywalk is basically a small walking loop, which would be appropriate for young children, about a quarter to a half mile, all right? And we take a picture book, take it apart, laminate the pages, and they get set into a frame, set on posts, each set of pages. About 18 stops on this loop. And the idea being, you start at point A, and you read the book, going from first pages to the second to the third, all the way around. It's meant as a way to engage children in reading and in outdoor exercise, okay? And get them moving, thinking about, you know, reading, early literacy skills, which is a big part of what we do at the public library in storytimes for young children. So this is kind of an extension of that. I think you've got up there on the screen, you can see what they look like. There is an installation at Exton Park on county property that is maintained by the Chester County Library. It's been there for five and a half years, and they've had very few problems with it. Very low maintenance, I think. The person who's basically taking care of it right now, so the biggest thing it needs right now is the frames need to be revarnished, okay? The heavy lifting for the Borough Public Works Department would be the initial installation, you know? We have to lay it out, first of all, okay? Which would be done in conjunction with Public Works. I'm sure Keith would be involved with that, Friends of Hoops Park, where are we going to put this? And then how far apart will these stations be set? And then Public Works would actually do the installation, you know? Cement, set the posts, put the frames on top. And at that point, we can take over from the library. We will do the rest of the work, laminating the pages and getting them into those frames. We've got a quote from a company that makes these things specifically for Storywalks. So they're easy to maintain, they're easy to change out the stories, which we would plan to do twice a year, probably in the spring and the fall, which also gives us a chance to actually, you know, really inspect, does everything look okay? Do the frames still look all right? Is there any problem? That kind of thing. The grant pays for all of the materials, so cement, posts, frames. From our point of view, we probably can get a laminator as well out of this, which is a wonderful thing. So that's what this project is. And I really, you know, I have every faith in the Public Works Department. Been working with them for years, you know, they do a great job in what they do, they're very good at it, and they, you know, they know what they're doing. So, I think there are questions, yes?
Yeah, well, first I was going to ask about the grant, but it sounds like the grant will cover the cost of everything, which is great.
Yes.
Do you have like a plan of exactly where this is going to go, or is that going to happen later in terms of?
That's, we haven't, we haven't actually said where in Hoops Park.
Oh, it's going to be in Hoops Park.
In Hoops Park, I mean, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. I mean, this is, just to have gotten to this point has been, has been a bit of a slog.
Sure, and I, yeah, I can appreciate, we don't like the last-minute stuff, but I can appreciate your position. It's not, wasn't out of your hands, so. Questions, yeah, Mr. McGuinness?
Victoria, thank you for that brief presentation. Does that grant cover labor costs?
No.
Because I didn't see that, okay, it didn't.
No.
Do we have an estimate, Keith, or Don, about how much in labor costs it's going to take at this time?
Any other questions? Mr. Flynn, you got a question?
The reason why it was set back last week is because there was questions on who's going to maintain the units and who's be responsible for it and all that stuff. And we needed a plan. And the plan, the memorandum of understanding plan, lays out everything that we basically asked to be done, so.
Okay. This MOU, it says for three years.
That is, that is a stipulation of the grant, that it be maintained in that place for a minimum of three years.
Gotcha.
And as I said, you know, the one in Exton Park's been there for more than five years and has not, I asked, and they have not had any problems with it.
Okay. Any other questions? Any, anybody have any issues with this, or is it something we could put on? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I'm wondering why it would be in Hoops and not Marshall Square, which is right literally up the street from you.
Well, that was, you know, working. Go ahead.
I suggested, and I'll tell you why I suggested it, because Marshall Square has their own attractions there. Everhart Park has their attractions, and Hoops Park, which is our third-largest park, which had a nice walking trail that the Public Works just put in. I suggested that because it's more of a woodsy, mirandering walk-through. That's why the Hoops came up.
And also, working with our board member, Rachel Kagan, who has worked on things at Everhart Park, she also suggested that Hoops might be a good, a good fit for it.
I would think with the walking trail, that makes a lot of sense, just because it's, it already has the walking trail.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, this would, I would envision that this would be a smaller loop off that walking trail, just because, again, you know, we're talking about picture books, so we're talking about younger children. And most Storywalks are no more than a half mile.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with something we could consent to, or? Yeah? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that'll go on our consent agenda for tomorrow night. Moving on to item six, which is approved Chester County Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Bid for Fuel for Waste Water Plants. And I see the committee recommended this 3-0. Anything you want to add, Mr. Metric, or Mr. McCoy, or anything?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Any issues with this? Can we go consent? Okay, any comments from anybody out there? Okay. Number six is on a consent agenda, thank you. Item seven, under our Parking Committee, is authorize a solicitor to prepare an ordinance and schedule a public hearing to add handicap parking spaces at the following locations. 508 East Minor Street on the north side, 120 West Minor Street, change existing Sunday only to 24/7. Use 712 South Penn Street and remove handicap parking spaces at the following locations. 428 West Chestnut Street, 703 South Adams Street, and 349 East Biddle Street. Seems like we have a lot of routine, just fixing the things and making sure that the signage is correct and all that, so. Questions, anything you want to add, Sheila?
It has been tedious and thoroughly vetted.
Fair enough, okay, all right. Okay, do we schedule that hearing tonight? Should we put a date, or is this, we wait until? I feel like we should.
Yeah, I think we should, so the February business meeting would be a good date.
Okay, so, is that the 15th?
The 15th of February.
Oh, you're. Was that right, still? Okay, so it was right, okay. All right, so that'll go in consent, unless anybody has any issues with that? And February 15th will be the hearing. Yeah, is that good? Okay. Any other comments from anybody on that? Okay, that's all consent, moving on. Item number eight, under our Public Safety, is approved Resolution 2023-01, which is a designated emergency service provider for the Borough of Westchester. I remember these things, I think this is a routine, just updating. Okay, so this is pretty standard and we do every year or so. Any questions on this or comments, or can we consent to it? Okay, any comments on that for anybody? All right, number eight will go under consent as well. Item number nine, under Finance and Revenue, is approved of Resolution 2023-02 to adopt the 2023 Borough of Westchester Fee Schedule. And it's attached, this was committee recommended 3-0. Any big changes to the fee schedule or anything, or anything we need to know about? Mr. Allen, anything you want to add? Miss Leont, do you want to talk?
Good evening. So there's five major changes that we're making to this fee schedule. We're changing the meter bag rate for the funerals from $8 to $10.50. We're also changing Lot 5 and Lot 7, the prices for the spaces from $60 to $75 per space. Actually looking to change, charge the cost of thumb drives that we have to provide for specialized document requests, and charging 75 cents for EV structures in public spaces, as well as just updating the schedule for the county lot that was signed earlier last year.
Okay. I feel like we've all been updated on what a fee means pretty recently, so I feel like that makes sense to update those costs. Any questions or comments from council on this? Do we consent? All right, any comments from anybody out there, questions? Thanks, Barbara, I appreciate it. Okay, that'll also go on our consent agenda, item nine. Moving on to Other Business, we have a couple things here. So under Other Business, A is announce the purpose of the January 11th, 2023 Borough Council Executive Session. We met to discuss legal issues in regards to the stream protection fee. Item B is, 10B rather, is approve the December 2021, 2022 Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes from last month? All right, can we put that under consent? Okay. C, 10C, is discuss the PennDOT Highway Safety Improvement Project. Mr. Metric, do you have some information on that?
Thank you, moving along right here. Bill, did you get my email with that attachment yet? That's awesome, thank you. As you all are maybe already aware, those who are listening may not, may be hearing it for the first time. PennDOT is planning a $1.7 million improvement project on High Street between Minor and Rosedale. It's going to add pedestrian-focused improvements to slow traffic down and make the corridor safer. And it's a project funded through one of PennDOT's programs meant to address motorists and pedestrian safety. So we're very lucky to be on this list of improvements that PennDOT wants to do. PennDOT has hired an engineer to design the project, and it's currently in preliminary, it's finished preliminary design, and it's going into final design. We want to just briefly touch on a few things with the project and ask your council's opinion on a particular matter having to do with the project. We do expect this project to go out to bid at the end of this year, probably in September, and construction beginning in spring of 2024. That's the best estimate that PennDOT's provided us so far. And it's going to take at least 12 to 16 months for the entire project to be completed. So moving forward to the next slide, there'll be pavement markings, excuse me. Sidewalks will be reconstructed in areas that are going to be disturbed. Curbs will be replaced in areas that are going to be disturbed. The roadway will be milled and overlaid with new asphalt. They are not remaking the entire corridor, so this is going to be integral to what I want to ask you about. So go on to the next slide, please. The way they're redesigning this corridor is they are making changes to where the curbs are placed. They're creating bump outs, they're constricting traffic flow to make it safer for pedestrians to cross, slow down traffic in certain locations. But basically, they are leaving in place whatever design is out there today and whatever materials are out there today. So this is a picture of High Street at Neeld Street. So as this project were done, excuse me, the existing Cobra Head lighting would remain, the existing concrete sidewalk would remain in that location because it's not being altered. But there is going to be some alteration to the curbs where that person is standing waiting for the bus. So in those cases, that curb will be reconstructed and replaced with new curb. So going on to the next slide, it brings to question this issue of what's it going to look like when they're done, right? So we have, on our books in the Borough, we have certain design standards for our town center and Harb districts. Our town center district extends all the way down to Price Street on High Street. So when we have land developers coming in, like for instance, if the Burger King property were to redevelop, decorative lighting would have to be installed, granite curbs would have to be installed, and brick sidewalk would have to be installed. All those things you see in this picture that we've said are important to the historic fabric of the Borough. And we have created, council has created standards in its zoning code and subdivision code to require that of developers when they come to our town. So going on to the next slide, I'm going to show you, this is an instance of how this is going to be impacted. I wish I was, still had time to do photo simulations and show you what this is going to look like afterwards, but I'll have to do my best to describe it with words. You're looking north on High Street, and Barnard is heading west to the left of this photograph, where the "Do Not Enter" sign is. You see the brick sidewalk on High Street, and the curb in this project on High Street is going to move a little bit into the roadway. That'll have the function of creating less space for the pedestrian to cross, making it a little safer. It'll have the effect of slowing down traffic a little bit. And the curb will be reconstructed in the area from the "Do Not Enter" sign around to the fire hydrant, more or less. But it will be, where you see the concrete in this picture, they're going to put back concrete. And so we think it's kind of silly, just from the point of view that we require brick of people who are developing here, that if you're going to tear up that concrete sidewalk, why are we putting back concrete? Why don't we put the brick back? The reason simply is it's money. Brick sidewalks and granite curbs and decorative lighting cost more than Cobra Heads, concrete curb and concrete sidewalks. And it's pretty significantly more. So going on to the next slide, we're going to, all sorts of disclaimers about this work that we've done to date. We actually would really like to spend some money with our traffic engineer to dig into this and make a better cost estimate. But this gives you at least an understanding of, I just mentioned a $1.7 million project. It might cost north of $600,000 to put back granite and brick sidewalks in these locations. And that money's not in the budget. Right now, the project is specified for replacing materials with like materials in places that they find them. So where they're disturbing, curb and sidewalk, and there's concrete today, they're going to put concrete back. And I think, we think to remedy that situation and to install decorative lighting, you're looking at a spend of over $6,000 to do so. So next slide. It's, this is a conversation I'd like to have with council tonight to get some guidance on this. We could pursue funding for these historic elements that I just talked about that are required in your code. We'll need PennDOT's concurrence to do this because it's their project. So we would be coming to them hopefully with a partnership or some money to say, can you change your specifications to put in granite and brick and decorative lights? Here's some money to do so. Or is it smarter to push this change further into the future? For when those properties redevelop along High Street? Is this something you want to tackle now? Or do you want us to put some effort and time into this to see if we can get, we get the needle moving on this issue? And that's my question to you.
So the second, your second option there, is that something where in that district you would require certain upgrades? If land development came in, if somebody wanted to build on a property, they would have to? That would have to be, is that a zoning change, or is that a, specifically, what is that, what do we do on that end? Do we change zoning to that?
It's a design standard in your subdivision and land development ordinance. So when an activity qualifies as subdivision or land development, they have to comply with the ordinance or get a waiver from council from those standards. They'd have to come and appeal to put in concrete.
Okay.
But they're coming to put in concrete because they want to save money.
I feel like we should do both of these things, but council, what do you think?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On High Street, that portion of High Street, how many of those properties in the past 50 years have, would have been asked to change the sidewalks? How likely, what's the likelihood of?
What's the rate of change?
Yes.
The kind of organic rate of change?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that, but we'll get that for you.
Mr. Metric, do you have any idea what the success rate is when going to PennDOT and asking them to make these types of changes?
I don't, but I think if I talk enough with our engineering team, I could get an answer for you on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Metric, we wouldn't necessarily have to do all three things. I mean, for instance, we could do just the lighting. I mean, lighting seems to be an important thing on that entire stretch. I'd rather see more lights and the decorative lights than the granite curbs and brick sidewalk.
So I like your point because one of my concerns about the lighting was lighting just doesn't, you just don't get to pick a spot and there's a light. You have to put in.
Where you have to put the conduit in, since they're doing all that work anyway. The lighting seems like the most, the easiest thing to do. I mean, even if we were to delay some of those other things for some future capital project, I'd like to see the lighting improved and have the decorative lighting.
So maybe it would be helpful for you if we parsed those three things out with a better estimate?
And can we, can we, to Mr. Stefano's, I don't think this is an either-or, maybe it's both. If we pursue number one and have number two as a fallback? Or even pursue both of them concurrently? Assuming we can find some grant money or?
Mr. Baptiste, yeah, Mayor?
Yeah. I would also like to see them work on having concrete, excuse me, having brick sidewalk, because that creates the historic warm look that Westchester is known for. It seems ironic to allow PennDOT to do something we're not allowing the neighbors to do in the historic district. If this is part of the historic and business improvement district, or whatever you call it, I think that it needs to meet the standards. High Street is a big conduit in and out of the town, and it sets the tone for the town. And I don't think we should allow them to come in and be slipshod about it and reduce our standards. Also, I would say if you're going to have concrete around the corners, you know, for easy maintenance and wheelchair accessibility, fine, but I think it should be considered concrete, you know, excuse me, brick. We need to take a look at replacing brick with brick and having it brick to keep that Westchester charm that we're known for. And if it means looking for grants or whatever it does, because if you don't look, if you don't ask, the answer will always be no.
Yep.
It doesn't get better. Prices don't get better.
I also think it's.
We should this forward to the future. I think we should look at lights, we should look at the lighting, we should look at the bricks.
Do we have the ability to use any of the Recovery Act money for this project? If need be?
I think we can, yeah, but I'd like to probe other sources first.
No, I agree with that. I think maybe as a last resort, then we use that Recovery Act money, to the mayor's point. I think if the neighbors had to make those changes, you know, were required to make those changes, you know, we should be able to do that, to have that still historic feel within that district.
Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Metric, Bill, can you put back the Bernard Street picture? The, from the "Do Not Enter" sign all the way around to the fire hydrant. So that's granite curbing, and you get no beauty and no result other than saying it's granite because it's painted. So concrete, you can't tell if it's granite or it's painted. So the concrete back in there wouldn't hurt my feelings at all. And if you look at the. width of those two buildings, you're looking at about 400 square feet of brickwork from the Bernard sign up to the fire hydrant. So you've got two buildings wide, so you're looking 20 feet apiece, 400 square feet. It's not a lot of money. And the brick, we already have the bricks. So if we take the bricks up, store them, and then it wouldn't cost PennDOT any money for bricks just to put them back down. And to Mr. McCoy's point, the, the acorn lighting is, is very important, I think, to downtown. But replacing the granite, you get no benefit from it because you're painting it yellow. So.
I, I like the idea of what, along with what the mayor was saying about the, just that brings you into the center of town when you're driving in, and it would really bring, you know, a connectivity with the rest of, with, you know, the university district and on up into the bid. So I, I really think pursuing it in some way, it would be really important to make the, you know, aesthetically, that bring kind of cohesiveness to the, to the borough. And since we're doing it anyway, you know, we're, we're changing these things anyway, let's just do it the right way. So, yeah. So I would say it's look at, for sure, I feel like I'm hearing that from most of you, that we should definitely look at some funding of some sort, grants or whatever we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Allen, yeah. And then when we get the more detailed estimates, can we also, like, would it be possible to have some kind of ratio to, like, look at the labor compared to supplies or materials? Because I think that kind of gets back to Mr. McCoy's point, where we might look at this, like, the labor cost of putting in a lamp is already happening, and maybe the supplies are, like, if we're going to redo the labor again, basically, as a later capital project, I think it would make sense to know how that breaks out. Mr. Cook?
One more question, it's unrelated to, to this, but, and I, I don't know the answer. Is truck traffic restricted, tractor trailer, from 202 through that corridor now, or is any plans to do anything along with this project? Is that something we could do?
Got to look into that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update. Do you need any kind of official action tonight, or just?
No, I've got, it's, we've got plenty of direction we can go with here. I think one comment I'll add to the conversation is, High Street's an important gateway to the borough. It's also an important gateway to the university. University has a lot to gain from High Street looking its best. So that, we will have conversations with the university to see if they want to partner with us on this funding difference.
Yeah. That's a familiar number that I saw up there, too. So, so, yeah. I agree, though. I actually thought of that earlier, and then, good thing you brought it back.
Wouldn't hold my breath on that one, but.
So, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Metrick. Anyone else have a comment on that, Mr.? Yeah, yeah, Daryl. Mr. Cook?
Daryl Cook, South Monahan Street. How many parking spaces will this plan eliminate?
I think, don't hold me to the exact number, but I think it's in the neighborhood of eight to 12.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Metrick. There's no action on that item. And then we're moving on to 10D, which is consider adding three motions to appoint for a solicitor, engineer, and planning consultant to tomorrow, January 18th, 2023 discussion agenda. And you just wanted to bring this up to make it three separate items, is that right, Mr. Metrick?
Yeah, correct. The administrative code instructs Borough Council to appoint a borough solicitor, engineer, and planning consultant every January of odd number of years, so it's time to do that. And I would suggest we put three motions on the agenda tomorrow night. We'll be meeting an executive session prior to tomorrow night's meeting to discuss the matter, and we'll be ready to take action tomorrow night.
Does that sound good with everybody?
But I do have a quick point with that. Would that include with borough solicitor, the labor lawyer as well, or would that be a separate one?
Correct. It would be my intention, if council wishes to define, like, engineering duties amongst multiple consultants, it could do that together in one motion. But I think we should keep the, the legal, the engineering, and the planning consultant as three separate motions.
That would go under just solicitor, right? There's that, and our general solicitor?
To the, to the point, excuse me, for the point, the labor lawyer, that's not mentioned. And we did talk about that earlier, later last year. So don't we have to vote on that as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, I think that would go under borough solicitor. We would kind of make sure, we, we'd break it down into labor or general.
Great, thank you.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
I wasn't paying attention.
Okay. Don't worry.
I'm very sorry, Mr. Torsten. I was chilling.
So there's no, we don't have to, like, put that on consent. We just, we just gave direction to do that.
We'll have it on tomorrow night's discussion agenda.
Okay. Any other comments on that or questions? Okay. E, 10E is consider adding a motion to authorize the borough manager to negotiate a lease extension with SEPTA to the January 18th, 2020 discussion agenda. So this would add an item tomorrow to authorize Mr. Metrick to negotiate that with SEPTA, that lease. It would be, yeah, it would be an item tomorrow night, discussion here.
Yeah, there are two, if I may. There, there are two. My, my thought would be to have council authorize the borough manager to, to negotiate the lease, lease renewal that is going to expire June 30, and with two main, two points to work, work within, or work within the boundaries of. To clarify the geography of the lease, subsequent to the opening of the service at New Wawa Station. So since, since this lease was last signed, SEPTA expanded to Wawa. And then to propose a long-term renewal up to a maximum of 15 years, contingent upon a clause that would allow a termination of the lease for the reestablishment of commuter rail service by SEPTA, or a SEPTA-approved third party, which I think clarifies what I had sent to everyone in an email on Friday. Thank you, Councilperson Flynn, for that.
And that would be between SEPTA and affiliated third party in the borough of Westchester, correct?
I know there are someone from the Westchester Railroad here tonight as well. I don't know if you have anything to add to it.
Mr. Metrick?
Quick question.
Okay, Matt, please.
So, quick question. If we're saying perhaps a third party, we're not taking on the expense of any third party, are we?
It wasn't by, I haven't heard that. Council could, if it wanted to, take on expenses of a third party? That's your prerogative?
It's probably not, but.
Mr. Metrick, the, my question I wrote down was, for, for tomorrow night, so you be prepared, contingent upon a clause that would allow SEPTA and the borough of Westchester to terminate or modify the lease by mutual consent. That way there, the Westchester Railroad or Four States, or the Metro can't negotiate themselves out of, out of stuff? Is that what you're proposing? Only the borough and SEPTA are going to have, have the lease agreement. We're going to lease it to Four, Four States or the Historic Railroad, and a clause in there that Historic Railroad and the Metro can't supersede each other without the borough's consent.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing happens with, without, actually, without SEPTA's consent. That's what I want to focus on, SEPTA being the owner of the, the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to come and speak to this a little bit, or, yeah, sure?
Good evening. Just want to make a couple of comments. My name is Derek Slyfer, and I'm the operations manager for the Westchester Railroad and Four States Railway Service. I want to thank you guys for taking the time to discuss this. This has become a, kind of a hot topic issue. And also would like to thank Mr. Metrick for his assistance throughout this process. So as he said, our current sublease expires in June of this year, as discussed at last month's work session, and we're requesting another 15-year sublease in order to continue this operation and provide Westchester and Chester County with a popular tourist destination, as well as numerous volunteer opportunities for the community. After last month's meeting, we've since provided, at the borough's request, a list of capital projects completed in the last five years. Westchester Railroad has invested over three quarter, three quarters of a million dollars of our own funds in the last five years into the infrastructure of our leased right-of-way. This includes routine track maintenance, grade crossing repairs and inspections, bridge stabilizations, and other routine repairs. All of this is in addition to our operational needs such as equipment maintenance, insurance, fuel, event planning, and other care of our facilities. So running a short-line railroad is no small feat, and we take it very seriously. Our operation is compliant with all requirements set forth by SEPTA, as well as the Federal Railroad Administration. We are subject to all of the applicable regulations that large railroads follow. Now, we understand that Metro Rail has become a very big topic of discussion, and the work the Rail Restoration Committee has done is commendable. We've all read the news articles. I want it known that we are not against the expansion of SEPTA commuter rail service to Westchester. It has always been our understanding that if SEPTA decided that the time was right to expand commuter service to Westchester, that we would have to step aside. The key word in all of this is SEPTA. That has always been in our lease since 1996, and it will surely be in all future leases. They hold the keys to all of this. So regardless of the findings and studies of the committee and their partner organizations about regulations and coexistence, the fact of the matter is, SEPTA has the final say as to who they approve as the operator of the railroad. As it stands right now, we are the only approved operator. It's extremely unlikely, from a rail industry standpoint, that SEPTA will entertain the idea of allowing a third party to operate passenger service that interfaces with its own commuter railroad. That's not just a notion, but it's a fact. SEPTA has already stated on record numerous occasions that they are not interested in pursuing this service at the present time. In my recent discussions with SEPTA, their view has remained unchanged in this matter. So we respectfully ask that, when considering this sublease renewal, that the terms of the current lease are largely left unchanged, aside from some of the geographical changes that we have suggested to coincide with Wawa's expansion. The rest of the items in the lease do not affect or hamper the committee in any way in their ability to petition SEPTA to expand commuter rail service to Westchester. We ask that Westchester Borough continue to support Westchester's only operating railroad. Westchester Railroad has enjoyed a very good working relationship with the borough and SEPTA over the last 25 years, and we would like to continue that relationship and continue to serve this community. So in closing, I thank you for your time, and we look forward to working together.
I appreciate that, the, the comments. And I will just tell you, I'm pretty certain that council up here, we all understand that SEPTA has to be involved with this. And I know that borough management and staff also understands that. So we absolutely on board with you on that, and we appreciate all that you do, and we look forward to getting a new lease and having it
Thank you.
Meet the needs of all parties.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
You got it.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay, so we can put this on as an item tomorrow? Okay, so this will go on as a discussion item. Okay. Any other comments from anybody out there or anything? Okay. All right. So that'll go on. We have one more item under other, other business F, which is discuss the status of the PICO Harmony Project relative to the Gay Street closure. Mr. Edwards, you gonna speak to this?
Yeah. Good evening. Don Edwards, Public Works Director. Mr. Metrick asked me to speak to this, and if you'd like, I could give an update on the Harmony projects.
That'd be great.
There are two projects that are downtown, Harmony IV and Harmony I. Harmony II and III don't exist. Harmony IV is basically Gay Street and some connecting streets. And Harmony I is basically Market Street and some connecting streets. Harmony IV is mostly completed. There might be a little bit of subsurface work between now and the spring. And then in the spring, there will be some more paving that was done. There were, there were two streets that were repaved a couple of months ago, and it, I thought it turned out well. But it should be the springtime when Harmony IV is completed. Okay.
And then, so they, did they have to wait, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. The, the repaving, does it have to be done at a certain time of year because of the weather?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. I think it's 35 or 40 degrees and rising is the, the saying for black topping.
Gotcha. Okay.
Harmony I contractor started, I believe, a few months ago. Most of that project is not completed, and I would expect that that work will continue through the end of the year. PICO has not given us a detailed schedule, but I do think it's going to take some more time for Harmony I. And as it relates to the Gay Street closure, I understand that the decision has been made, or we're heading towards weekend closures, perhaps for an extended period of time during the summertime. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Gotcha. The, yeah, so the Harmony I is, is, it's, it's started, right? It's not, you said, you think it'll take the rest of the year, but it's, it is underway, correct?
It is underway. I think they're working near the Justice Center today.
Okay. All right. Do you guys have comments or questions on this? Mr. Allen?
Yeah, my, my main concern is around safety with, just from the Public Safety Committee meetings, that some of the stuff we talk about, and I just remember, like, the manhole cover, like, blowing up. Like, we've had stuff like that happen. Is there any room for PICO to move more quickly on Harmony I to make sure
I wish.
We're safe?
Right.
I just want to make sure, I guess, the council, we're on them and pushing them forward to get it done.
Yeah, we're, we, staff has been trying to push them. We have weekly meetings, and we've been trying to push them. So we did push them to get the two blocks repaved, you know, before winter came. And, and as far as safety is concerned, we do have these weekly meetings. So if there are any concerns, we can, we can address that during those meetings.
Do you think it would help to get, like, backup from, like, the fire chief, maybe? Because he's someone we were talking to last week in committee, if we could get, like, Chief Morehead and Chief Palma to sign a letter, maybe move the needle a little bit?
Absolutely. Anything safety-related, I'm confident we can, we can get those, those things addressed.
Yep.
Is there really a good reason why SEPTA demands that they refill each of the holes every night with macadam, and then dig it back out again the next morning? I mean, is it, is it a, a standard that they go by instead of using metal plates that work rather quickly?
Right.
They spend three, four hours in the morning taking out the macadam they put in the day before?
Right. I'm not sure if it's their standard. I agree with you that a steel plate is a more effective, more efficient way of doing things. I can raise that issue. I can, I can check into what their standards are.
As far as the Harmony I for this upcoming, you know, season that we're going to be closing Gay Street in the weekends, what are the effects that that will have? Will they be working at the same time in terms of closing Market Street while Gay Street's closed at all, or would that not conflict?
Well, there, well, we will work to minimize any conflicts, and we'll make sure that they have a traffic control plan in place that, that works, you know. So we'll, we'll just have to address that.
Yeah. Okay. Because I know that was a big concern when we first, you know, year to year, been talking about closing Gay Street, is, well, now we have this project. But we, honestly, I, I think we all decided we can't wait till the projects are done. We'll be, I mean, I don't, I won't even be on council anymore at that point. So, yeah, so, okay. All right. Appreciate it. I appreciate you meeting with them. Please feel free to keep us up to date, and if you need some pressure from us, I don't know how much weight we carry, but we could try. So, yeah. Thank you. Any other comments on this, or? Okay. All right. Any other business? All right, seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.